Good afternoon, everyone. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, it's my pleasure to welcome everyone to the seventh meeting of the ETSU Board of Trustees. Today's meeting is another first for the Board, meeting here in a new location for us, the Reese Museum, as the Culp Center renovations are well underway. Since our last meeting in April, contractors have worked diligently to reach a phase in construction that will allow for food service and the bookstore to be ready to serve students, the rest of the Falls semester. We appreciate their hard work. Much work continues on campus, and it's a remarkable transformation to watch. With so many projects, including the Martin Center for the Arts, it is breathtaking to watch the continued physical growth of this great university. It has also been a very busy three weeks for the Falls semester. I want to thank all of the staff involved with the final push over these past weeks. Our enrollment figures look solid, with the university remaining in its budget confidence interval. We look forward to hearing specifics from Dr. Nolan during his report this afternoon. Also, I want to extend a warm welcome to Mike Kraus, who is here at today's board meeting. Mr. Kraus is the Executive Director of the Tennessee Higher Education Commission. We are fortunate to have him with us this afternoon. Mr. Kraus is a champion for higher education and East Tennessee State University. He will provide comments to us during the board meeting as part of Dr. Nolan's report later. I look forward to hearing from Mike today. I now turn to the next or first item on the agenda and ask Dr. Lindell to call the role, please.
Dr. Alson?
Present.
Ms. Ayers?
Here.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Here.
Mr. Golden?
Here.
Ms. Grisham?
Present.
Dr. Latimer?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Present.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Ramsey?
Here.
Chairman Nieswenger?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Next item of business will be the approval of the April minutes. Minutes from the regular meeting in April are found behind tab one in your board materials. Do I have a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
Take it. Further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close legs sign. Thank you. Next is under tab two, Consent Agreement. As noted in the materials found behind tab two of your agenda materials, several items have been reviewed by our board committees this morning. Those items include approval of committee minute meetings and university policies. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like to pull for consideration by the full Board? Seeing none, then do I have a motion for adoption of the consent agenda? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close legs sign. Next is the report from our Finance Administration Committee, chaired this morning by Mr. DeCarlo. Steve, will you present your minutes?
Thank you. Today, the Finance Administration Committee has one item to present to the Board which requires its approval today. Do we present that now, or you take care of that later?
It was taken care of in the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
And also at the committee meeting today, Jeremy Ross presented us an update on the facilities and the capital projects on campus. Let me read, this is the limited version of Jeremy's presentation, which as we know was not limited during the committee meeting.
Amen.
So right now, the campus has 300, 400 construction projects, the main being, of course, the Culp Center, the Martin Center, Land Hall, which are all the larger projects. We discussed a new proposal for the Humanities Building, it's a $76 million project, you know, with a lot of goals in mind, increase retention, higher quality space, something that's a new proposal, something that, you know, we're hopeful we'll get done. We also discussed the master plan, which will be updated over the next year or so. We've been operating with a 10-year master plan, and frankly, have done a good job achieving most of our goals. But that'll take place, that'll be updated over the next year or so. So that was my brief summary of Jeremy's presentation. Also, BJ presented an overview of the Tuition Transparency and Accountability Act, so which requires us as a Board to post a 15-day prior notice and justification for proposed tuition and fee increases. Also, the Board is also required to provide a report each February to the Office of the Legislative Budget Analysis, detailing how revenues from prior year tuition fees were expanded. And also, beginning in August of '29, we must provide each accepted student a non-binding predictive cost projection for the student's chosen field of study over a four-year period. And frankly, we had a lot of debate about that issue. So with that, I yield to the Higher Florida.
Well, thank you. Item six.
Not much higher than that.
Not much.
Chair, I probably need to explain that. One of our first finance meetings, Jeremy came and did a presentation while going on. And he went on and on and on. So after the meeting over, I said, Jeremy, you took 50 minutes of the hour, why don't you cut that down to 15 minutes? So the next time, he did it in 12 minutes. So it's kind of a joke, every time they do something like this, they turn around and say, "That okay."
He's getting closer to the 50 again, by the way.
Item six today is the report from Academic and Student Affairs Committee. Dr. Linda Latimer. Linda?
The Academic and Student Affairs Committee this morning had a very full schedule, reviewing a number of academic and student policies, which we just passed on the consent agenda, as well as hearing some great reports on various programs. We learned of the work taking place by an ad hoc group that's examining academic programs across the institution, specifically regarding STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. This in turn caused some robust discussion in our committee this morning on perhaps some of the ways we would like to see, by committee in particular, approach, strategy, and a different, you know, type of presentation. So that was interesting. We also addressed an item related to the tenure appointment of the new Dean of the Graduate School, Dr. Sharon McGee. And on that note, I would like to ask Dr. Bach to come to the podium to present this item for the full Board's consideration.
With her appointment as Dean of the Graduate School in July of 2018, Dr. McGee brought to the university valuable experience from her previous appointments. She served as Associate Dean of the Graduate School of Western Carolina. She had also served for a number of years as a full professor and as Chair of an English Department at Southern Illinois University in Edwardsville. She's been tenured at prior institutions, she has all of the requirements, to meet all of the requirements for the rank of Full Professor and for a tenure appointment here at ETSU. The staff, through Dr. Nolan, presented to the committee this morning the recommendation that she be awarded tenure in the rank of Full Professor, and noted that all requirements of the policy involving consultation with the Department, the Department Chair, and the Dean had taken place. The staff recommends that you support the recommendation from the academic community.
Thank you, Dr. Bach. This comes as a recommendation from committee. This time, I just simply ask for a voice vote. All those in favor of this tenure request, please say aye.
Aye.
Close legs sign. Thank you. Next is report from the Audit Committee, chaired by David Gold.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We held Audit Committee meeting this morning, approved the minutes, reviewed a number of audits and investigations that have been performed since our last meeting. We also reviewed and approved the audit plans for the next coming year. You have in your materials the audits and investigations, and happy to address if you have any individual questions. I would say that nothing was particularly noteworthy, good robust discussion about those on the heat map that were closer to the upper right-hand quadrant. Looked at the recommendations log, which is our way of ensuring that what the university says they will do to close findings actually occurs. In that color scheme, green and blue are good, and happy to report all greens and blues. We spent probably the most important time reviewing the Quality Assurance and Improvement Program, self-assessment, and independent validation. All audit shops that operate under the Institute of Internal Auditing Standards have to undergo this every five years. Those that don't operate under IIA should be embarrassed. So it's, pretty much all audit shops should be doing this. Speaking as a former audit director in another life having undergone this, I can attest that it is a robust process, and there's basically three grades you can get, generally conforms, partially conforms, or does not conform. You conduct a self-assessment, then you get independent validators from other institutions of higher learning. We had three, one from Florida, one from Alabama, and one from Knoxville. They assess the conformance with IIA standards, assess the effectiveness and efficiency of the internal audit activity, providing services to the Board, management of ETSU, and we're tasked with identifying improvement opportunities. Happy to report that they found general conformance. There are a couple of good recommendations of things that we can improve on, including the medical school and scope of the audit universe and future audits. I would suggest that Becky Lewis, under her leadership and the entire team, should be commended for undergoing this and the excellent outcome. With that, we had a little bit of discussion around other business of what we might want to see in executive session. We looked at, for future agendas, and looked at investigation that would be kicking off. And that is my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next item under tab four, it's the Title IX Report from Athletics. At this point, I'd like to ask Dr. Richard Sander to come forward. Dr. Sander is the Director of Global Sports and Athletics Program. He will provide a brief presentation on the recent review of the ETSU intercollegiate athletics program as it relates to compliance with Title IX of the Educational Amendments Act of 1972. Copy of the full report is in the supplemental materials folder. Dr. Sander.
Thank you, Chairman. When Dr. Nolan asked me to do this report, one of the things I wanted to do was make sure that, you know, we looked at this from a broad scope, and we retained Jeff Schimmel, who is an attorney in Atlanta, who has done numerous Title IX reviews for a lot of different institutions across the country, and he's the former athletic director at San Diego State. So everything has been run past him, and he has been, you know, a huge help in this report. Just kind of to set the stage, you know, ETSU Athletics has always strived to provide quality experiences to all student athletes and ensure that no student athlete is disadvantaged because of gender. In 2007, ETSU did a major study of Title IX, and that has been the baseline of this report. Many initiatives have been implemented since 2007, and like I stated, ETSU is very determined to not disadvantage any student athlete because of gender. Like Mr. Nieswenger said, the law was passed in 1972, and basically states, no person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation, be denied the benefits of, or subjected to discrimination upon any federal, any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. And then, then in 1975, the Department of Health, Education, and Welfare actually came out with regulations pertaining to athletics. And as you can see, any program that sponsors interscholastic, intercollegiate, club, or intramural sports shall provide equal athletic opportunities for members of both sexes. Enforcement of Title IX has been placed with the Office of Civil Rights. There are actually 13 areas of review that have been identified. As you look at this slide, you can see that the first two are capitalized, because those, keep that in mind, because those are the two real critical issues that continually need to be monitored and made sure that, you know, comply with both participation opportunities and financial aid. The other 11 categories, we'll kind of explain a little bit later. These are some definitions, just to kind of help us get to where we need to go. Violation represents compliance problems so severe as to deny equal athletic opportunities on the basis of sex program-wide. Refusal to remedy risks lose federal funding. A disparity represents a difference in benefits where students of one sex are disadvantaged, but not to the extent of a violation. So now, going back to, you know, the previous slide, looking at those top two, those are the two categories where if you're not in compliance, you could be found to have a Another, two other terms that are really important to understand are duplicated and unduplicated. So participation opportunities are the number of athletes that are listed on the squad list of each sport. So for example, if you're a cross-country runner, you will actually count as three participation opportunities, because you'll run cross-country, you'll run indoor track, and you'll run outdoor track. Those are called duplicated participation opportunities, and that's an important concept. And unduplicated is just how many actual athletes you have within your total program. So a cross-country athlete is only counted once when you're using unduplicated participation Now, you know, like I said, the two areas that we really kind of focus on are our participation opportunities, and that's the first one. And so you've probably heard about the three-pronged test that has been developed. And the first one is proportionate participation. Second one is program expansion, and the third one is demonstrate that accommodations are made regardless of program expansion. Well, basically, participation opportunities, to be compliant with Title IX, basically what you have to have, you have to have the same ratio of student-athlete participation opportunities by gender as the undergraduate student population. So as you can see, in 2017 and '18, if you can see that chart, the Athletic Department had female student athletes of 40% and male student athletes of 60%, compared to, you know, the student undergraduate population of females at 56% to 43% for males. So you can see that, using this prong, we're clearly not, we're clearly not compliant. Going back to this slide, program expansion, that means that you have to have a continuing, you had to demonstrate continually that you are adding sports of the underrepresented gender. Because we've added two male sports and one female sport since the previous review of 2007, it would be hard to justify that we are compliant because of program expansion. The third prong is demonstrate that accommodations are made regardless of program expansion, and that basically says, are there any female interest in sports in a 500-mile radius that we could provide? Nobody has met this prong since 2010, so we're clearly not compliant with that. So going back to our numbers, you can see that we're not compliant in any of the three The second category where we could, that we really have to be careful about, is the financial aid piece. An OCR stipulates that total scholarship dollars must be substantially proportionate to men's and women's respective participation. Scholarship awards need to be within 1% of the unduplicated participation opportunities. And this is where we go back. The last chart we used were duplicated opportunities, that means for every individual on every squad list. When you compute the unduplicated participation opportunities compared to financial aid, you get some interesting results. As you can see, in the unduplicated participation opportunities, we had men at 64.2% in 2017, '18, women at 35.8%. But when we look at the scholarship assistance in 2017, '18, we are the same proportionality as we were with the unduplicated athletes. So the second, the second area where we have to be careful, we're actually compliant with that. Now, the 11 remaining areas that were identified on the, on one of the previous slides, we have made major strides since 2007 in equipment and supplies, trailing per diem, scheduling of games and practice times, locker rooms, practices, and competitive facilities, recruitment, and coaching. So there are a few minor disparities that have been identified, but we are working continually to remedy those disparities. Now, there are three ways to become compliant. One is to add sports, so, you know, the underrepresented gender, women, we could add women's sports. A second way is to manage roster sizes, and a third way is to eliminate sports. As we have talked about it, it's pretty clear that to be compliant, we are probably going, you know, one of the things we really need to carefully look at is adding another sport. So in discussions with Athletic Department and with university leadership, we identified the sports that could possibly be added, and we broke those down into three tiers. Tier one being the sports that were most viable, tier two have some potential but present some serious hurdles to adding those sports, and tier three have little or no value to add to our program. What we really want to do is we want the university administrative leadership to use the 2015-16 Strategic Plan Criteria for adding sports to determine a priority for which sports should be added. Feel that that is probably the best way to go. Just to give you a little bit of an idea, the sports that have been broken down into tier, tier one, the ones that are probably the most likely to be evaluated by the university leadership are bowling, lacrosse, swimming and diving, and acrobatics, and tumbling, which, that's a term pretty much just for competitive cheerleading. Become compliant, one of the things that we wanted to do, rather than just say, hey, you know, this is a problem, as part of the review, we put together a paradigm where ETSU could become compliant by 2022 and '23. The reason why we're using '17 and '18, and rather than '18 and '19, this current year is we don't, we just clearly don't have all the numbers for '18 and '19, because a lot of sports haven't been applied yet. So what we want to get to, to be compliant in the duplicated participation opportunities, to parallel the projected undergraduate enrollment, we have to get to 54% women and 46% men. So that's that first area. In the second area of scholarship assistance, we need to get to the unduplicated participation opportunities to correlate with scholarship awards at 45% for women and 55% for men. So the first thing, trying to get to these numbers. Okay, if you look at where we are right now, and I know the numbers are pretty small on the screen, but right now, as you can see, as we mentioned before, the duplicated participation opportunities are 295 for men, 197 for women, and that equates to 60% for men, 40% for women. If we implement the plan, and this is by managing roster size and adding one designated sport, which would be determined by the university leadership, by 2022 and '23, we could get to a situation where we would have 250 male opportunities and 295 female opportunities, which give us the ratio of 54.1% for women and 45.9% for men. So that would get us compliant if we, and what we have there are each sport, the designation of each sport, and the mandated roster size for each of those sports. And so I think to do this, that's one of the things that we've talked about, we will have to really set very strict standards with our coaches as to the mandated roster sizes. So that would get us to that. The second part of this, as you raise the participation opportunities for women, you have to raise the scholarship dollars. So you can see in 2017, '18, we awarded $1.8 million in scholarships to women. We awarded $3.3 million to men. So that was a 35.4% to women, 64.6% to men, but that got us within the 1% ratio compared to our unduplicated participation opportunities. As we increase the participation opportunities, then we need to increase the percentage of scholarship assistance to the underrepresented gender, or women. So as you can see, if you look at 2022, '23, you can see that we now have increased scholarship awards to women to $2,682,000, and kept the men's awards exactly the same. So that is one of the premises of this paradigm, is keeping the men's financial awards or scholarships to men at exactly the same level. But that would get us to 55.5% for males, 44.5% for females, and when you look, when you look at that, this would be how the scholarship awards would be awarded. So you can see, from 2017, '18 to 2022, '23, we would award those scholarships to women based on those numbers. As you can see, we also have added a designated sport. Once again, the university leadership will identify that and determine what is that sport. So one of the major concepts of this paradigm is basically, we want to invest in the sports that we have, the ones that are successful. We feel it's important to be successful. So if we invest in volleyball, if we invest in softball, if we invest in women's soccer, if we invest in those sports, we feel that we can become very competitive, win conference championships, and do all the things that a quality athletic program do to spread the brand of ETSU and be successful. And so we think that's a much better way than spreading these dollars out over numerous sports. By doing this, we still become compliant, we provide participation opportunities, and we build on the programs that have been established and are already successful. I guess with anything, you know, it's easy to come up with a way to do something, but you know, the financial, how are you going to make that work financially? So working with Dr. Hoff, we put together a funding scheme that would basically increase student fee by $25, starting in 2019, but the increase would only go to the incoming students. So students that have been here in the past would not pay any more in student fee. You know, I think one of the issues that has always kind of surfaced for any university is by increasing student fee, the current students feel that, you know, they have been, when they came here, they were paying one fee, then it's been increased. So, you know, our recommendation is for the current students and people that have been here already, they don't ever have their fee increased. But what we would do is we'd increase the fee for the 2000s. But what we would do is we'd increase the fee for the 2019-20 new students by $25, and we would add $25 each year for all new students. If you stay, if you maintain progress toward a degree, you would never have your fee increase, your athletic fee, or your this new fee. And what that would do by, I guess that's by five years or six years into the process, it would generate almost $1.4 million. It would help offset, you know, the cost of increasing scholarships and basically us becoming compliant with Title IX. So that's kind of the plan and the thoughts and where we are. Thank you.
Board members, questions? Dr. Sander?
What is the penalty not getting in compliance?
Oh, well, I mean, you can lose federal funding. I mean, for all your programs, not for the athletic programs, for every program that the university has, you know. They will come in and they can fine you, they can do a lot of different things. So typically, what they would do is if we have a plan in place, I mean, they're pretty understanding that we have a plan, we're making efforts to be compliant. And so I think having that plan and starting to institute it would put us in good stead with, you know, the Office of Civil Rights. But if we kind of just ignore it, I think you could get them to come in and do a major investigation, and you'd probably get fined with the potential of the university losing all federal funding.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I want to provide a little context around this report. So as you may recall, at our board meeting last fall, one of the things you asked was for our office to conduct an evaluation of the university's position to be compliant with Title IX as a result of the implementation of new sports on the men's side. So working with Dr. Sander to put this report together, our goal was to have this to you now, so as we go through the fall and the spring and begin preparations and planning for budgets, you have a sense of what's in front of us. So this report is not a firm path of here's what we're going to do on date X and date Y. I think ultimately what Dr. Sander is suggesting is that we, as an administrative team, then begin to bring you potential options moving forward. What he has provided, I think, is a very clear path, a path that's straightforward. But I think he's also demonstrated that the university at this point in time is within compliance, but our ability to maintain compliance long-term is going to require new investments and adjustments of roster sizes. So I just wanted to put this in the context of this was a report the board requested in the fall of last year, and we're providing that information to you today.
Okay, good. Yeah, and to just kind of expand what Dr. Nolan said, you know, the paradigm that I presented was just, you know, one option, as you change numbers, you know, you just kind of have to figure out how to balance all those things and make them work. So that was just kind of, you know, taking some assumptions and presenting something to you that would give you a little bit of a foundation as to, you know, where we're going and where we want to get to.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sander.
Thank you.
On behalf of the board, Dr. Nolan, since we're making good progress on this, I'd like you to take the steps that are necessary for us to continue to be compliant with Title IX in our spring meeting and bring back where we are.
So you would like for staff to bring recommendations back to the board at the spring meeting predicated on the report that Dr. Sander just provided? We'll do so. Thank you, sir.
Item nine, Board of Trustees Self-Evaluation Policy. I'd like to ask Dr. Linville to present that draft policy related to that evaluation. It's in Tab 5 in your board materials.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the board had discussed earlier, today we present with you a self-evaluation policy. The purpose of the policy is to sort of expand what is available or outline its responsibilities within the bylaws. It helps provide guidance on how the board will conduct its self-evaluation. This helps us also with compliance with the regional accrediting body for the university. And the details specifically outlined in the policy indicate a yearly self-evaluation or reflection that would be conducted by an anonymous survey. So we would develop that survey instrument at your direction for you to be able to conduct that yearly with the leadership's review of that for the board. But it also provides for a more in-depth review periodically at the direction of the board leadership or you as the full board in terms of how you want to make improvements. So the policy is there behind Tab 5, as the chair indicated. It's pretty straightforward. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Linville. Do I have a motion to approve the policy as outlined?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, thank you. Item 10 today, Research and Economic Development. I'd like Dr. Nolan to introduce Dr. Paul Hill, who is with us today to provide a report on research and economic development. His materials are in the, again, in the supplemental material folder.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you very much. And it's my distinct honor and privilege to welcome Chancellor Paul Hill to our campus and to formally introduce him to the board. As a matter of introduction, Dr. Hill has for the past six years served as chancellor of the higher education system in West Virginia. Prior to that role, he was vice chancellor for science and research and had the misfortune of serving on my staff for the better part of six years. In that capacity as vice chancellor for science and research, Dr. Hill led the state's EPSCOR efforts, not only in West Virginia, but he was president of the National EPSCOR Board. He also was the brains behind West Virginia's research investment program known as Buxford Brange. The research plan and the entire infrastructure that was developed, more than $100 million all-in investment by the state on research, was developed under Dr. Hill's leadership. He developed the state research plan for West Virginia. And as you'll see within his materials, research under his leadership more than doubled, now with the state doing more than $200 million a year in research expenditures. Much of that work occurred because of the vision that he provided. He was chairman and CEO of the U.S. Chemical Safety Board. He has a bachelor's and master's from Marshall University, even though I won't hold that against him. And he has a PhD in biology and chemistry from University of Louisville. Dr. Hill's report comes at the request of the board for us to begin concerted steps in planning in anticipation of the partnership with Ballad to grow research at the university. This is one of two consulting visits. Dr. Hill's research focuses on our structure, the structure of our research foundation, the structure of our staff, IRBs, but the physical structure of the institution upon which the research activity will be predicated. So with that, Chancellor Hill, I'll turn to you.
Thank you, Dr. Nolan. Thank you to the board for inviting me back to this beautiful campus today. It's indeed been an honor to really visit your campus, to talk to many of your faculty members, particularly your deans and leadership within the divisions, particularly in the sciences of medical school here at this great institution. Let me begin by saying, you know, I have some materials there that I presented back to you, just a brief report of my observations about the opportunities that are presented to you, particularly through the work of Ballad Health. Thank you, Dr. Nolan, for that great introduction, probably more than I deserve. Indeed, I do believe that you have a great opportunity here because you have such a foundation at this university. You have diverse departments, you have a lot going on, and so I'd like to talk to you today, I don't mean this to be elementary, but some of the initial comments, I'd just like to get us all on the same page about research, particularly competitive research, because that is the name of the game nationally, and being able to compete among your peers, that is individual peers or individual faculty member and institutions as well nationwide for the dollars that are out there and available to institutions. And just like the question earlier about federal funding, federal funding, the United States government is the largest funder of R&amp;D work in the world. So that opportunity is there for many, many universities, and of course, a violation, we talked about in Title IX, could wipe that out. So everything is at risk, and particularly those dealing with students, but that's another topic. Let me just turn to my slides briefly here, and I can figure out how to advance this. Why advance research? What's the opportunity here? I think anyone who was present yesterday afternoon at the College of Business and Technology would immediately tell you how the academic enterprise, how learning is enhanced by what we saw with those students yesterday afternoon. Dr. Dupue, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Robinson, and others took us on a tour, and we met many, many students who were truly engaged in learning because of the research they were doing. So while we may look at the research enterprise as something in and of itself of bringing prestige to the university, bringing additional dollars, delving into knowledge creation, the bottom line is we're about students. And the bottom line is there's great learning that occurs through hands-on investigation and encouraging students to think broadly and to investigate, and that is the basis of research itself. The second, knowledge creation, you know, since the days of Socrates in the ancient Greeks, we've been as academics looking for how we create knowledge, the knowledge we know today, we like to exchange with each other, exchange with our students, but we're always looking at how we increase the enterprise and add to the knowledge of our race and understanding how we can build on that and solve problems for the human condition. And that really leads to the third item, addressing needs, looking at needs in the community, looking at needs all around us in the everyday world, from healthcare at the medical school to the business school, to the Department of Education, different ways that we can address the needs in new ways by applying new ideas and applying new methodologies to how we address those needs. And then many times, that can indeed lead to economic development. Indeed, new ideas coming out of universities can not only complement existing businesses and existing institutions, but also developing of new products, new ideas that in turn turn into business opportunities, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Just a few principles in advancing research. Something you're doing here is strategic capacity building. You want to take the capacity you already have, and if you have an opportunity for greater investments, the idea would be strategically to make those investments in building out the capacity that you already have. I like to say that research is people, ideas, and infrastructure. You can have great people, and indeed, you have brilliant people on this campus, there's no question about that. They have great ideas, brilliant people have great ideas, but if you don't have the infrastructure, if you don't have the laboratories, if you don't have the equipment, perhaps you don't even have colleagues that can help you solve a problem, then the research cannot go forward. So those three items, and often, particularly I know in my state and some of the other states I've worked with, Hawaii and Montana in particular, it's focusing on that infrastructure that we could help build so that the research can proceed. You know, perhaps we have a faculty member who needs a large piece of equipment, a scanning electron microscope, or a new type of laboratory in order to carry out the research ideas that they have in mind. And those indeed cost a lot of money, so there must be a program to make investments as well. Recruitment, of course, is something that can be done to add to the firepower, if you will, of the research teams that are already in existence. But also, if you cannot really bring those, there's also the opportunity to do partnerships as well. Other universities in the region, even other universities around the country, if you're trying to solve some of the same problems, there's the opportunity to partner as well and not buy everything outright. Focusing on the big questions, you know, we have some great center groups, heard a little bit of discussion earlier today about the centers on campus. I think those are the key targets for potential investments, but they need to focus on the big questions. When you say, we're going to conduct research on cardiac disease, well, what approach is that? Is it transmitters? Is it biological? Is it chemical in nature? There's a lot of different aspects in how we solve these problems. So some of this will need to be discussed further at the faculty level to decide how that might be addressed. And then institutional support. The Office has sponsored programs here, spent a lot of time looking at their operation. That might need to grow, particularly if you expand the numbers of research projects and program and active faculty on this campus. Doing that, the support mechanisms are there, but perhaps they could be enhanced even further. A few final terms here, just talking about competitiveness. As I said, competitiveness is something you see in the sciences around the country. We must have competitive researchers in order to get into the major research funding programs around the country. Some of the faculty have indicated some of those are indeed very competitive. At the medical school, we heard about something called R01 research programs. At NIH, those have become extremely competitive, and so they're doing something called R10s now, which are a little bit easier to get. So there are ways to address this and build competitiveness over time so that you have a group of people who ultimately compete with anyone in the country. Ultimately, enterprise support, don't forget that research itself can bring lots of support to the institution, can bring an enterprise in and of itself, and I'll show you a little bit of that here in just a second. Patenting, licensing, intellectual property, sometimes people don't recognize that they have intellectual property, that they've developed a new approach to something, so being on the watch for that and looking at how those opportunities can be brought to bear will be extremely important. And then, as I mentioned, economic development near universities. My friend John Smith at Pittsburgh, at the Pittsburgh Greenhouse Project, used to talk about the opportunity of economic development around universities, and he called it the fountain effect. Well, the fountain effect is basically that you have ideas coming out of universities, and if you think of the water in the fountain, it doesn't splash very far from the center of the fountain. And that is true. If you look around the country, many businesses that spin out of universities tend to set up shop not more than 50 miles away from the university. Well, why is that? Well, let's say two years down the road, the technology which is being commercialized suddenly might need to be tweaked. We go back to the university, to our colleagues, to do that work. Where do we go when we need employees? We go back to the university that helped develop those ideas. So often, you find this fountain effect that indeed helps to land new economic development in communities around university. Here I show you, this is some West Virginia data, forgive me, it hasn't been updated in a while, but when Dr. Nolan and I started working on this in the early 2000s, I began working on it, we were bringing in about $34 million a year in expenditures. As you see in the dark blue bars on that chart, we had about $73 million, this is three universities primarily doing this work, and we steadily threw base investments. And these investments were not huge. The state was putting up about $4 million per year at one point by 2005, and we were getting more and more federal dollars as a result of those investments. So what we ultimately, again, this hasn't been updated in a while, but we're consistently in the $200 million range for those three universities. With Marshall University being roughly about 10% to 15% of that, much of the other is West Virginia University, and a small portion is West Virginia State University. So there are three schools in there, but it shows with the consistent investment, and you see the $50 million in the center there in the orange bar, the $54 million that we were invested, those went into endowments that are continued to this that we were invested, those went into endowments that are continued to this day, generating additional dollars into the program. So after meeting and discussing and reading lots of reports here at East Tennessee State, there are some suggestions for you to consider here in the near term. First is the initial funding. How you, how you apply that, how you would, would invest it, again, strategically in getting some of your research teams stronger based, stronger supported, perhaps the equipment they need, the direction they need to take the next step. And then the, the other three items on that, that chart, faculty development is just a recommendation that not primarily for your junior faculty coming in. Let's say you're, you have a strategic recruitment plan for any new vacancy occurring in the departments that you begin to help groom those individuals, give them support training, and essentially grow your own. It's another part of the strategy to grow your own individuals who are grant competitive while you're also recruiting external participants, faculty members who could be competitive. Then that recruitment mechanism that I mentioned earlier, and making continuous investments in the research infrastructure. As you recruit individuals, startup packages will become important. Many faculty will not make the change from one university to another without a significant commitment of startup. That might help with the equipment, that might help with the laboratory, but it, but it does indeed go along with the recruitment structure. The midterm, then, I think you would turn focus on capitalizing on some of the outcomes. As I said earlier, recognizing the intellectual property, patenting, licensing, and policies. You know, there are many examples of those. Stanford University has a, has a intellectual property agreement on their homepage. You can print it up as one page. I recommend institutions don't get too hung up on that, on royalties. Gatorade's a good example. The University of Florida gets a, a small royalty every time you buy a bottle of Gatorade. But those are the exceptions. That's, those are few and far between. Really, universities prosper by having their alumni really do well in life and coming back to the institution and making large support contributions to the institution rather than what you get from those. Although those, indeed, those are important to consider, and it's important to consider how you support people moving into that arena, particularly the last items, initializing business development support, or even consider somewhere down the road, having a business incubator on campus. And we have one that provides legal assistance and, and business tutoring essentially for business makers. And then lastly, in, in the long term, look at, look for capital investments, where those dollars might come from. As I indicated, perhaps it's alumni, different types of capital can come into play, venture capital, crowdfunding, a lot of the buzzwords you hear today in the investment networks, along with looking at particular markets. And of course, individual faculty members will, will be very keen, keenly tied into these, and then ultimately, job growth that's associated with those. I know we have a, we have a few businesses, again, that have hired many of our graduates to come out and then work in those particular individuals, individual companies. They are, they come from time to time, but you saw that timeline. This is really almost two decades of work to, to move us to the level that we're doing that much research turnover and annual expenditures in research. So just to wrap up, I think you're, you're on a great, a great trajectory. There's a competitive market out there, but there are ways of getting into the market to bring additional funding to grow your research. Again, that first slide was, was really about growing the volume, and that's mostly what we focused on in West Virginia and some of the other states I've worked with, growing the volume, and then these other opportunities can really start to come to bear as you do just that. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
So for ETSU, having been through this, what are the first three items or so that you would say, okay, here's where you need to start?
Good question. What I would do immediately is, as I said to the president, I've identified at least five of your centers in there that have a great opportunity, they show some competitiveness, they're really growing and where they need to be. The fact that you have an opportunity for additional investment, it's like having an opportunity for a large research grant. You have to turn to the faculty. There's no way I could say that Dr. Alsop's biology department needs expertise in X or Y, and we're going to put that person in that department. I think those groups need to be consulted as to where they're going with research, what their focus is, and then what the gaps are that they see missing. Do we need another chemist? Do we need a biologist? Do we need a molecular engineer, a medical engineer? So I can't tell you that, but I would ask the faculty to sit down in those groups and to make proposals as to how they would grow their research programs, and then look at those as how you make the investments based on that. That's, that's one of the first things I would do. I believe, working with Dr. Duncan's office, in the office's sponsored programs, there are, certainly the basic functions are there, but we've talked about in the strategic plan, which by the way, is very good, it's very solid. There are a few tweaks I recommended about increasing the support to faculty. There's a lot of paperwork usually that goes along, a lot of reporting, a lot of evaluation of research programs, particularly if you get into NIH and NSF, that you have to comply with. Faculty don't like to do that. It takes up their time, and their time is far more precious doing those, doing the research itself rather than that. So some of those functions in the research office could be amplified, having people on hand who know how to do that, and again, advocating strongly. You and the president and the leadership of this university can also advocate to say, "This is where we're going. This is where growth can occur. This is who we will be as a university in a few years." And that advancement officer can also look for opportunities where dollars are available, channeling those to the attention of the faculty, as well as really advocating for, again, this is where the university is putting emphasis now and in the future.
Okay. Board members, questions? Dr. Nolan?
Uh, Dr. Hill, a question on staff. So you had mentioned staff within the Office of Research and Sponsored Programs. Do you feel that we have sufficient staff to absorb the expectations that are to come with the Ballard merger? Or if you were in this position, would you make adjustments to the portfolio of services provided in that office?
I think initially, you're okay, but it, I would recommend that you grow some of those positions to take on some of those functions over time, simply because they should, they will grow in volume along with the number of research projects that you might have going on at campus on a given time. And in talking with Dr. Duncan, we talked about making it so apparent also. There's nothing like frustrating research faculty with, again, with red tape dealing with, with grant operations, when an individual who can make that readily apparent to all faculty and make that door open so that they know there's someone there who's going to handle that or help them at least fill out the important paperwork that they will have to do in order to make sure their grants get funded and that they stay funded.
And then within your report, which is in the, just as a context for the board, in the supplemental materials packet under B, one of the recommendations that you noted that strategic recruitment is not specifically addressed or coordinated across the campus. Give us your thoughts from, based upon your experience in other states, about how an institution such as ETSU begins that process of identifying clusters and embarking down the road of strategic recruitment?
Well, I, I think that's, it's creating a, a research culture. Institutions who have been doing a lot of this work for a long time create a culture of research expectation. And that, that isn't as evident here, in that it's something that should grow over time. So when you're recruiting for a brand new faculty member in any department, the chemistry department, let's say, with the idea coming in, you're here to teach certain coursework, and that is the expectation, your, your tenure policies might be based on that, which is another thing you should take a look at. Is research valued in your tenure policy? And begin to change that, the tone of some of that to say, now, now when you come through the door, research is an expectation of your job here at the institution. Now, there needs to be an option. It's not for everybody. There needs to be an option to say, if you are really interested in research and teaching or developing a long-term research program, then, you know, we want you to, to fill this position at the university. So that's the first part. It's through vacancies. But the second part, of course, is going out and finding, having that discussion with the faculty, finding where your missing links are, and using this, these funds, if, if they are indeed made available to the university through the relationship with Ballard, indeed using those to build the firepower, if you will, of some of those programs.
Now, Dr. Hill, you're hitting on something too that I, I think is pretty close to the minds of many deans that may be listening to this or will listen to it. Often when there is a vacancy that occurs within a department, I think one of the first things that may be looked at is what was the teaching load of that individual? Because teaching is a very important component of what we do. Undergraduate research becomes a very important component as well as part of the teaching process besides just the course loads. But if we begin to think about creating more avenues for research, we, we bump into a problem. And the problem is, can the department really afford to have someone who is doing more research because of the teaching load that was just vacated? And if we lost a researcher who may have had many more hours in the research lab component than in the teaching load, sometimes it becomes harder to justify. How have you been able to structure a culture in some of the places where you've worked where teaching is valued, but research becomes valued as well?
Well, indeed, the, the, as, as I began my remarks today, teaching, teaching and learning is what we're all here about at the end of the day. Certainly trying to work, work through that process by expanding some of those research resources back to the department itself to make sure that you can accommodate the need and the extra hours that it might take to essentially buy out faculty members' time. If they indeed say, "Hey, I'm teaching four classes now, but next semester I'd like to focus on my new research grant that I just received," then taking dollars out of those, those grant programs, actually most are written into saying, "This is my plan," to make sure that that, those funds are offset and that the courses get taught all at the same time research progresses. I, I would, I always think faculty members should keep their foot in the teaching door. I think as we saw last night, you see that great synergy of exciting students, bringing them into the process. And let's face it, they do a lot of work as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr.
Well, thank you, it's been my pleasure.
Item 11 in today's agenda is our president's.
ETSU members of the board, thank you and good afternoon. My pleasure to present updates on a number of items to the board as part of our fall quarterly board meeting here on the campus of East Tennessee State University. I want to thank the board for not only your service, but for the active conversations we had this morning in both the audit, the finance, and the academic committees. It's clear to me that this board is increasingly becoming engaged, becoming aware, and becoming informed of the issues and opportunities that are presented to the campus. And I think I can speak on behalf of all staff to say, we look forward to working with you and learning from you in the months and years to come as we embark upon the opportunities that are in front of us. I also want to take a moment to thank Dr. Dennis Dupue and his staff for the time that they provided for the wonderful visit to Sebat yesterday evening. It was a chance to see a broad and diverse college, a broad and diverse portion of this institution, a college that includes everything from the top ROTC program in the state of Tennessee to the top computer science program in the state of Tennessee. But I trust that you all enjoyed that time as much as I know that I did. And then I'd like to thank the Reese Museum staff for being wonderful hosts for today's meeting. And I welcome feedback from the board after the meeting on this location. With the renovations to the Culp Center, we may be nomads over the course of the next 12 to 18 months as we wait for the Culp Center to reach completion and we can return to the East Tennessee Room. So I would welcome your thoughts online, offline, about this venue in this location. I want to frame my comments as I attempt to do anytime I speak before a group. Within the mission of this institution, the gentleman there in the black and white picture is the first president of the university, Dr. Sidney Gilbert. Dr. Gilbert outlined the mission for the university, framing the principles upon which the university is focused within the goal of regional service, scholarship, education, and then improving the condition of the region and the needs of the state. So as we reflect upon things from enrollment to research to service, to some of the things you'll hear about later in my report, I always want to keep people grounded in this is why we're here. This is why the university was created. This is why we do the things we do on a daily basis. But one of the primary goals of this institution is to support the needs of, of the region, and much of that support is provided through some things we're going to talk about in a little bit. And I want to begin with reflecting on something that occurred at the beginning of the semester. Not had the opportunity to brief the entire board on the events that occurred on the first day of campus. I did keep the executive committee and the chair briefed as it was unfolding. In fact, and as you see the timeline there in front of you, the events that unfolded on the first day of class. One of the bullets that is not mentioned is sometime around 12:10, I got on the phone and called the chair to let the chair know what was unfolding. But as everyone in the room is well aware, on the first day of class, we had an incident that arose that caused us to lock the campus down. At about 11:47, we were informed of a 911 call of an incident that had occurred between two contracted employees on the campus. And as you see, moving forward in the highlights of the bulleted activity, within one hour, we moved to an all-clear. Within that one hour period, we put in place a comprehensive search for the suspect, both on our campus as well as in conjunction with Johnson City Police. We locked the campus down, there was a shelter-in-place warning, but then within an hour, that suspect was identified and the all-clear was lifted. So what's the takeaway from that? In many respects, we as a campus had a massive tabletop exercise on the first day of class. A massive tabletop exercise during a time period in which a course change should have occurred. A massive tabletop exercise in which for freshmen, that was their first day on campus. So from my perspective, this was a wonderful learning opportunity. And what this slide and the next slide outlines is what we as a campus have done intentionally to learn from this experience. On August 27th, I sent a campus-wide communication to students, faculty, and staff, asking for their feedback, input, and observations on what worked and what didn't work. The highlights from the more than 200 points of feedback that we received are in the bullets at the bottom. First, there was a lot of confusion around what shelter-in-place meant and what do you do during a shelter-in-place warning? Now, for those of us who've lived in communities in which there are massive industrial complexes, I understand shelter-in-place. And looking at Chancellor Hill, I think he understands it as well, and folks in Kingsport may understand what shelter-in-place means. But for many, this was a new term. There were questions that arose around the screening of contracted employees. There were questions about the timeframe of events. There was questions about the repeated message and the sounding of the siren. This is only the third time in my tenure as president in which we've sounded that siren. The first... The first was in 2012, and we had an individual of interest who was approaching campus, who had been involved in a domestic dispute off-campus. We felt that the campus was at risk. We sounded the siren and locked the campus down. The second was a year and a half ago at our all-campus staff picnic, when we were gathered in the dome and our tornado was approaching the campus, and we sounded the siren so that folks would shelter in place. And then the third was on the first day of class. One of the things that we heard from feedback is that the message was given once, and then there was a siren. Folks couldn't hear, and it would have been helpful if we had sounded that message again. So those things run through together in the final bullets. So what comes next? What comes next is that we have met in a variety of settings with student government leadership, faculty leadership, staff leadership, and in university council. We've brought together what could be a series of next steps in terms of progressive improvements. We were fortunate that, over the course of the summer, more than $200,000 was invested in door locks. If this had occurred the year prior, the majority of locks on this campus did not interior lock, and most of our classrooms did not have locks at all. So we installed more than 500 locks to classrooms across campus. We've got more work to do, and over the course of the next summer, we'll continue to place interior locks on all the classrooms across our institution. I think we're going to take an extensive look at cameras, because the best thing that we can do as an institution is to extend our, expand our technical footprint. So I think you'll see us bring before you in this budget cycle investments to expand the technical infrastructure of the institution. The next is to look at our Gold Alert system. That's a text message system that goes to all faculty and staff of students across the institution. Primarily, people pay attention to it when it snows, because they want to see if I'm going to close school. Now, I think our students realize the need to pay attention to those text alerts much more closely than in the, they had in the past. And many of the students have recommended that we make this an opt-out rather than opt-in structure. And then I think you'll see us look not only at the protocols for the use of our sirens, but then also to work with cell phone providers, because one of the things that we found is that when the alert went off, everyone and their brother got on their phones to try to figure out what was going on. And some of the cell phone providers may not have had the coverage that we needed within the campus to, to meet all of that demand. But the takeaway from my perspective is, if I were giving us a grade, I would give it a B+. To have locked the campus down on the first day of school, to have taken the actions that we took, and within one hour, in conjunction with JCPD, to have apprehended the suspect, I think it was a job well done. We have a lot of opportunity to learn, but the beauty of this is, is now safety is at the forefront of everyone's mind, and people are paying attention to things that heretofore, we, as an institution, may have addressed in a tabletop, but it's a very different exercise when that exercise becomes active in real time. So I just wanted to give a board, the board, the update on what occurred and what we have done as a campus moving forward. Would be happy to pause for any questions about this event before moving into the next section of my update. All right, next is enrollment. We spent a great deal of time at the Board of Trustees Retreat late July talking about enrollment. We had consultants from EAB and Royal who provided an in-depth overview of some of our direct marketing efforts, our recruitment efforts, our outreach to high school students. But I think it was pretty clear, the intentional effort that this campus has placed in enrollment. When I gave you my listing of the top 10 things that kept me up at night, enrollment was at the top of that list. So where are we with respect to this fall? As you look at the fall, we are all in, total enrollment down 39. As you'll recall, we built the budget on a projected enrollment decline of 100 students. So we surpassed our projections. We essentially treaded water compared to last year. Our FTE numbers are up slightly, but if you look at overall enrollment for the institution, undergraduate is down. However, I draw your attention to the second element, total graduate enrollment. That is the largest graduate enrollment in the history of the university. So we continue to see significant demand for graduate programs and professional programs at this institution. We begin to see more and more students coming from outside of our traditional service areas. But we're also starting to see national and state policy landscapes and dynamics at those two levels beginning to impact our enrollment, and I'll talk more about that later in my update. We, as a campus, are making significant process improvements in financial aid, financial services, and enrollment. We are implementing a CRM, and I'm very hopeful that the implementation of that CRM will continue to facilitate process improvements and allow us to do a better job of customer service. But that's our overall enrollment. Let me dive in a little bit at a geographic distribution. Our largest enrollment continues to be from Washington and Sullivan Counties. Knox County is number three on the list, and you see the growth from Knox County. We received more applications for our freshman class than from Knox County than any other county in the state of Tennessee. And then, as you move down, you can see those counties in rank order, Carter Green, Hawkins, Hamilton. A significant number of students come to this institution from Chattanooga. And you can see the distribution in the bottom portion of the chart of in-state and out-of-state. Draw your attention to North Carolina. Our North Carolina, North Carolina numbers are down. Much of the cause for the decrease is a result of the launch of North Carolina Promise. Students can attend Western Carolina University for $500 a semester. Out-of-state students can attend WCU for $1,500 a semester. So we pivoted in the face of Tennessee Promise and moved east, strategically recruiting Buncombe, Henderson, and Western North Carolina to offset the loss of enrollment that occurred at this institution as a result of Promise. And you can see in 2015, there were 496 students who enrolled at ETSU from North Carolina. But now, state policy in North Carolina is forcing us to change our approach, and you can see the decrease there in North Carolina. Another area in which policy is impacting the institution is on the column listed international. Number of international students at the institution has declined, 121 students. The policy dynamic and discussion at the federal level is impacting us here. If we were able to just simply have treaded water on international students or to have maintained the growth trajectory, we would have realized enrollment growth. So policy matters, and those policy conversations are impacting enrollment at the university. And I just mention this to you as a context. There's not a lack of effort on our campus to grow enrollment. We brought to you today a listing of new academic programs predicated on growing enrollment. I wake up thinking about enrollment. I go to bed thinking about enrollment. We are working a plan, but we're going to need to revise and adjust our plan, because the landscape around us has changed since that plan was originally developed. Provided a little bit of context so you have a sense of granularity. I'll jump into more granularity at the state of the university address in a couple of weeks. But the overall enrollment at the institution, the takeaway, is within our budget and confidence intervals, and we're moving in the way in which we had projected to move from a budget perspective. Last element is from an academic perspective. You see the number of freshmen. Total number of freshmen in the class this year is down 74. I'm going to draw your attention to the bottom slide. That slide is a general indicator of the academic competitiveness of the freshman class. You see at the bottom of the slide, individuals who qualify for academic scholarships at the university, at the faculty dean, provost, and presidential level. So that chart's a little busy, but what you see is to qualify for a presidential scholar, you need to have a 3.9 high school GPA and a 30 ACT score. You see that, over the course of the past four falls, that we've experienced growth in the number of students with 30 ACTs. We've experienced growth in the number of students at the next criteria with 27 ACTs. We've experienced growth in the number of students with 26 ACTs. So if you were to take these APS scholarships plus honors plus Rome, about a third of that freshman class has an ACT score north of a 25. So we are recruiting high-quality students to this institution. You saw that last night in the quality of the undergraduates who you had the opportunity to hear from at Seaback. So while our numbers may all, may not altogether be where we would like for them to be, the academic quality of the class is not only meeting our expectations, in some respects, it's exceeding our expectations. And then just a little bit of a close before pausing for questions on enrollment. You saw some of this at the board retreat with EAB, but the number of high school graduates in our country is projected to decline. A recent report that came out earlier this month from the Hackenberry Foundation noted that there was a significant drop in the birth rate as a result of the recession of 2008, which, as that plays its way forward, will increase, will, will cause a decrease in the number of college students by 15% in that traditional age demographic by 2025. Where you're seeing growth is in Hispanic and Latino students. So as we plan our enrollment strategy, short-term and long-term, we need to be mindful of the demographic changes. And then we also need to be mindful of what's happening over in Cullowhee. Largest freshman class in the history of that institution, freshman class grew by 10.5% over last year. And you can see the growth in their honor students. So the landscape's competitive. We will compete with everything we have, and I would be happy to take any questions related to enrollment before talking a little bit about student success.
Let me just ask you, because you've talked about Latino students, the national mood about DACA. How is that affecting us?
State law does not allow the institution to offer state support for DACA students. We have worked with a philanthropist out of Nashville to offer some scholarship support for DACA students using non-state resources. You are seeing some of the private schools really grow their enrollment for Hispanic and Latino students, because they have greater flexibility from scholarships than we do as a public institution. I can't speculate on what the national dynamic will be with respect to DACA students either this year or next year. I've got a PhD in political science, but I gave up a long time ago on trying to predict the national political climate.
Can I ask just a, just a very basic, practical question about DACA and all those? In every conversation I'm hearing, because I know the philanthropist you work with, and we've certainly been approached with our own foundation, I think I have just a fundamental question. If we get past the tuition, if you, I'm a private philanthropist and I'm going to, if I wanted to help ETSU with that population, I couldn't hire them. Has anybody in that same conversation talked about, are there some processes to where that I-9 has an exception if they complete their college degree? Or, I mean, I don't want to get political, but I feel like if we're trying to help the landscape in higher education, has any of that ever been put together?
That's not something that, that I've been involved in at my level, but I know those are conversations that are playing a professional role.
We're really trying to explore opportunities for growth. There needs to be an employment piece at the end of this. Everything in education really, I mean, I see one of these other themes is regional colleges will face pressure, pressure to grow the professional programs. What we're looking about is education to career. So when they graduate, there's got to be a place for them to have a career. And I'm not, I don't want to get into politics of it. I'm just talking from a pragmatic, practical standpoint. I'd like to see those conversations happen simultaneously.
Questions on enrollment? Student success perspective, this is our retention rate for the fall, 73.12%, slightly down from last year, but continues the upward trend line that's outlined within the university's strategic plan. And then, from a degree productivity perspective, last year marked the largest graduating class in the history of the university at the undergraduate, masters, and professional levels. And you can see the significant increases in the number of students who are graduating from the institution. So while we put a significant focus on enrollment on the front end, as we've discussed at length, there's also a concordant emphasis on student success, and you're seeing that represented here in the significant increase in the number of students who graduated from the institution over the course of planning cycle. Going to now set the stage for a faculty member who will come forward, Dr. Dixon, and talk a little bit about some, some work that is underway across campus. And within my president's report today, I'm going to jump around a little bit. So we talked some about campus safety. We talked some about enrollment. We talked some about student success. Now, I want to talk a little bit about something for which the seeds were planted by a summit that I attended at the, with Scott and with David and others at the Nicewonder Center on April 11th of 2018. The Nicewonder Foundation hosted a summit on children. And during that day's conversation, there was a great deal of discussion and some very profound presentation on the challenges that are facing children in our region and individuals who grew up in a culture of poverty as they're moving through their educational experiences and moving on to career, workforce, and things beyond post-secondary education. Spent a lot of time learning from faculty on our campus. There are a number of faculty across colleges who are actively engaged in research to reduce the impact of ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, not only in our surrounding region, but here on our campus. And there's a group of faculty called the Brain Trust that has been putting together what I think is the beginning of a plan that could make us the first trauma-informed campus in the nation. This is work that I know is central to the efforts of the Nicewonder Foundation. It's central to the efforts of Governor Haslam. And at this point, I'd like to ask Dr. Wallace Dixon, who's the Chair of our Department of Psychology and who was also co-chair of our university's Strategic Planning Committee, to come forward and talk a little bit about these efforts. Dr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Nolan, Chair Nicewonder, members of the board, colleagues and friends. My name is Wallace Dixon, and I am in my 17th year in service as the Chair of the ETSU Department of Psychology. On this International Day of Peace and a World Gratitude Day, I am grateful to have the opportunity to come before you to begin to address an omnipresent danger that is more treacherous in American culture and especially the culture of our region than heart disease, cancer, stroke, diabetes, obesity, suicide, and drug dependence combined. The threat is the ACE, or Adverse Childhood Experience. Adverse childhood experiences result from growing up in households with addiction, mental illness, abuse, neglect, or loss, all of which, we now know, actually contribute to malformations of children's developing brains as a result of their chronic exposure to toxic stress. We also now know that adverse childhood experiences contribute to all of these major, yet preventable, causes of death. And the more ACEs we accrue, the more likely we are to die from them. Experiencing adversity in childhood is not only a concern for children in poverty. ACEs indiscriminately contribute to early death regardless of race, culture, and socioeconomic strata. More than 1 in 5 Tennesseans and more than 1 in 4 ETSU students have experienced three or more ACEs, an ACE score of three. And many in this room have also likely experienced multiple ACEs. But while many of us in this room are fortunate enough to describe ourselves as successful and resilient professionals, those of us with high ACE scores are still more likely to contract illness and die many years earlier than our peers with few or no ACEs. We should have as our goal the prevention of all ACEs, but the reality is that ACEs are pervasive everywhere. A college education may help us leave behind our ACEs-filled childhoods, but it doesn't necessarily help us escape the poor health outcomes that result. Fortunately, we can take action to help mitigate the short- and long-term impacts of ACEs in our community. At ETSU, ACEs leaders from five colleges, including arts and sciences, education, medicine, nursing, and public health, have formed a squadron of sorts to battle the ACEs legacies of our various campus constituencies. We call ourselves the Brain Trust, where BRAIN is an acronym for Building Resiliency Through ACEs-Informed Networking. Some might even call us the Brain Trustees. Would the Brain Trustees in attendance today please stand to be recognized? This is a great group to work with. Thank you. The Brain Trust has been meeting, plotting, and strategizing since spring semester to develop a multi-pronged attack on ACEs legacies throughout the ETSU community and eventually, hopefully, the entire ETSU service region. While ACEs are a fact of life for many people within our campus community, we can help ensure, ensure that they no longer determine their fate. An overarching first goal is to transform ETSU's institutional culture to become trauma-informed. Trauma-informed means, among other things, systematically and comprehensively integrating knowledge about trauma into policies, procedures, and practices. One objective of this first goal, among many that we can think of, might be to, to arm a trauma-responsive faculty with the tools needed to establish optimal learning environments for their students. Similarly, we might provide frontline staff with tools to foster supportive environments and interactions with students that help to identify solutions, enhance resilience, and prevent re-traumatization. A traditional obstacle for families and students, especially first-generation students, is navigating classroom and institutional bureaucracies. But this challenge becomes more But this challenge becomes more formidable by orders of magnitude for students with high ACE scores. A trauma-informed institution will not only help prevent attrition, but may ultimately grow the student body when word gets out that ETSU provides safe spaces to live and A second overarching goal with more of a long-term objective would be to produce generations of ACEs-literate graduates. By embedding a trauma-informed curriculum in a general education sequence, we can help ensure that ETSU graduates not only view their world through a trauma lens, but become compassionate contributors to and stewards of the region which we serve. As federal and state research and service funding priorities increasingly focus on the prevention and mitigation of ACEs, and as the goals of our Brain Trust map onto all six focus areas of ETSU's 2016-2026 strategic plan, now is the time for ETSU to place ACEs in the spotlight. ETSU is on the brink of becoming the first trauma-informed university in the nation. Thank you.
Within the board materials behind Tab C, there is a very brief white paper that Dr. Dixon and his colleagues have presented that outlines the present state of the institution. There's material from Governor Haslam's office that outlines what can entail and define ACEs. And then there's a brief one-page questionnaire. And I want to draw your attention back to a point that Dr. Dixon mentioned. One quarter of our students have three or more affirmative answers to this questionnaire. And as Chairman Nicewonder and Trustee Golden and others had the opportunity to learn this spring when we were in the summit in Greenville, this impacts not only health, but it impacts long-term outcomes for individuals who have multiple ACEs. So what we'd like to suggest is that we bring forward to you at an upcoming board meeting a formal plan that would allow us to become the first trauma-informed campus in the country. We welcome the opportunity to address any questions. If you have specific questions about ACEs, clauses, background, or the literature, I turn to the folks to my right.
Excellent idea. Thanks to you and each of the team members that are here for this.
Mr. Chairman, moving on, I want to provide a little bit of update and kind of a foreshadow of activity that will occur across campus during this academic year. The next two slides have the intentional title Selected Initiatives. They do not attempt to represent the totality of efforts underway across the institution, but these are efforts that I wanted to spotlight, given their important linkages to our strategic plan and charges that we've received from the board over the course of the past year. Obviously, there's going to be continued focus on enrollment, but one of the things that will be new is the launch of an institutional marketing campaign to support our growth agenda. Today in conversations with Trustee Grisham, over the course of their treat and over the course of the better part of the past year and a half, you all have asked us questions, why do we not market this institution? So you'll see us begin to roll out a marketing campaign in the fall and in the spring. It will be a modest campaign built upon a modest budget, but it's a start. The next is something that was outlined in the academic committee this morning, the development of new academic programs that align with market needs and support our growth agenda. We'll continue to implement our decentralized budget. We want to reinvest resources into personnel. In Dr. Hill's presentation, he talked about the need to focus on salaries. Last night, you heard about challenges that we face with respect to graduate stipends. It's hard to grow a research infrastructure if our graduate stipends are at a minuscule level. So what we are allowing is flexibility to the colleges through this budget process to manage their resources and as they're able to generate efficiencies and savings, to reinvest them in personnel. This fall, the College of Clinical and Rehabilitation Health Sciences will provide additional critical salary adjustments for their faculty and staff above and beyond those afforded to the campus as a whole. Those resources were made available because of the leadership of their dean and their faculty and staff where they reinvested efficiencies into salary. And we'd like to see that grow across the campus. In the academic committee this morning, I heard loud and clear the desire for the board for us to develop and implement key performance indicators, metrics, and outcomes that are measurable, that align with the budget model, and enhance accountability across the campus, and we'll bring you KPIs at the next board meeting. Dr. Sander provided a report on Title IX from an athletic perspective. The bullet here references Title IX from an HR, from an employee, from a sexual assault perspective. As a campus, we're going to update all of our policies, and we're going to examine potential changes to the staffing and support structures that implement the work in those areas. Reference the need for us to focus on campus safety as a result of the lessons learned from the first day of class. But more importantly, our new Chief of Police, Dr. Nicole Collins, is going to pursue ICLIA accreditation, which is the highest level of accreditation that a police force can achieve, and that will enhance the level of safety afforded to individuals all across the campus. We're gonna review our general education curriculum, and then we're going to develop a Greek village and associated quality metrics for chapters to move into that facility. We'll create ETSU Health, and we'll continue to enhance our partners with Ballin. We're gonna bring to you at an upcoming board meeting actions taken to implement lessons learned throughout the AIM process, which is a process of self-reflection and evaluation in the Academic Health Sciences Center. We're gonna continue progress to enhance our research infrastructure, resources, and the profile of the university. Today, you heard a first report, and we'll bring a second report to you in November that really focuses in on clusters of opportunity. We've got a lot of work to do on capital projects. For those of you who were in the College of Business and Technology last night, there was nothing fancy about those labs. There was nothing fancy about the facilities that you saw. In the academic meeting this morning, you saw pictures of chem labs and biology labs. We have a lot of work to do on this campus as it relates to facilities. The last academic building that was built on the main campus was the library. The last classroom building that was built on the main campus was the mini-dome. Part of the reason for that is the antiquated nature of the state capital process. You saw pictures of the MTSU Science Building. That building took a decade, Lieutenant Governor Ramsey knows more about that than I, for that building to move through the capital process and to get funded. So we have to look at innovative ways to renovate facilities on this campus, and we also need to work with colleagues at THEC to ensure that we do a proper job of demonstrating our need, because I think as you look across our facilities, we have facilities' needs, but we're attempting to address them. The Martin Center's coming up and out of the ground. We're gonna renovate and build an addition onto Lamb Hall, and I thank many of the trustees for your financial support to make that possible. We will open Building 60. So there are new academic buildings to come, but we've got a lot of academic work to do. Plus, Jeremy could talk for 50 minutes about all the work that's happening on the capital process, but I'll let Jeremy stay in the back for now. You heard some about the work we're gonna do in ACEs, but we also want to build the scholarship and community service aspects of the institution, both in our community service outreach, as well as a celebration of research through the Festival of Ideas in the spring. Mentioned to you the work we're doing to totally restructure HR. That work remains underway. One of the things that I've heard as a point of feedback from the board is the need for us to begin to develop the next generation of leader on our campus. So in the month of October, we will launch a new Presidential Fellows Program. We'll put out a call for Presidential Fellows, and those individuals will then spend the entire spring term in that Presidential Fellowship, helping to begin that process of grow your own within the institution. And then at some point in this academic year, we will launch a capital campaign, and that capital campaign will really not only provide opportunities to support scholarships and faculty chairs, et cetera, but hopefully it can help address some of the capital infrastructure needs that we've referenced on a couple of occasions today and yesterday. Quick glimpse of our legislative initiatives. The first is continued support for the Outcomes Formula. The next is something that we brought before the board and you endorsed last year, which is tuition equalization within the Gattan College of Pharmacy. We're hopeful that this year that's able to make its way into the governor's legislative agenda. We want to continue the campus safety initiative that allows us the infrastructure upgrades for locks, cameras, et cetera. We're hopeful that the state can support research. Dr. Hill talked about the $50 million Bucks for Brains Initiative in West Virginia. The state of Tennessee has not made investments in the research infrastructure of East Tennessee State University or the other regional institutions since the governor's chairs were established. That was under the administration of Lamar Alexander. So it's been decades since research investments were made in institutions such as ours, and we're hopeful that the incoming governor can build upon some of the work that occurred last year as the regional institutions came together to create the RISE Initiative that initially was in the governor's budget, but fell by the wayside as we moved through the session. We're hopeful that we can have predictability in capital projects and the process governing their development. Last year, our Humanities Building was number nine on the THEC list. I'm hopeful that it continues to move up the list because predictability is important for campuses. With a matching requirement in, in the millions for that building, our ability to reach out to donors for their support is predicated on predictability. And if we went from nine on the list one year to 39 on the list next year, I have a hard time raising money when projects move around to that extent. Hope that there's continued support for deferred maintenance projects, and then most importantly, we want to support our colleagues at THEC, the new governor, and the legislative leadership as they develop their higher education agenda. The turnover that's getting ready to occur in the General Assembly is beyond description. There's not been that volume of turnover in the General Assembly in my career working in higher education in Tennessee. So we have a lot of work ahead of us as we work with those new members to build their legislative agenda. But the person who's gonna lead that work, we're honored to have with us here today. Chairman Nicewonder introduced Executive Director Mike Kraus, the head of the Tennessee Higher Education Commission. And I'm now going to turn the next portion of my report over to Director Kraus, who's gonna talk some about the higher education landscape, the funding landscape, as well as ETSU's performance on the Outcomes Formula. So Mike, here's the remote, just click to the right.
And thank you very much, Dr. Nolan and Chairman Nicewonder, and all of the members of the board, for the opportunity to spend some time with you. I bring greetings from our chairman, Evan Cope. And would just say briefly, our first goal is just to reconnect. Unbelievably, it's been 18 months since the inaugural Board of Trustees and all of our locally governed institutions stood up. I know at the time, I think we killed you with volume of information. It's really interesting for us to see the evolution of all of the boards, and it's clear, I believe, that the Focus Act is achieving exactly what it was meant to do. If you think about the in-depth discussion we have witnessed even the last two hours, that is more discussion ever given about ETSU's specific mission than we ever saw under the previous governance structure, and I think it benefits the students here ultimately. I also want to take a moment, a personal privilege to thank two members of my team that are here, Dr. Lauren Collier, who many of you know as the Focus czar. She is at every board meeting for all six LGIs, so she is a road warrior, and we're very grateful for the role she's played shepherding this initiative. And then, Dr. Emily House. Really, we've developed a special relationship between Dr. House and ETSU. THEC is at our best when we are supporting campuses. I love THEC, but nobody graduates from THEC. And so it really benefits our team when they're able to get in the trenches with a president and see firsthand the challenges and the way that state policy looks down sometimes on campuses, and then bring that perspective back to THEC and say, you know, I don't, I don't think that's gonna work how you think it is. As a result, we started our own Presidential Fellowship program where THEC staff go out and embed on a campus for a year-long experience, and Dr. House is the inaugural fellow and also doing that experience here at ETSU. I will say, a big part of-
Raise your hand.
Yes, Dr. House in the back.
Thank you.
Yeah. Disappointingly, not in blue and gold, so she still is gonna need some more time, clearly, as a fellow. Obviously, THEC, we strive to be a completely unbiased umpire who calls balls and strikes. I can tell you that Dr. Nolan has been very effective in beginning to make Dr. House have some bias towards ETSU. So I think you all will view that as positive, and her perspective has just been tremendous to have and bring back the campus perspective. There are a lot that's happened in the last 18 months, and I want to show you really this needle that we've been trying to move in Tennessee now around higher education, specifically since 2013, the progress made in the last five years. At times, we rerun the data because it seems so exponential, we wonder how did this happen? A quick reminder of where we started in 2013, when the General Assembly and the governor put a stake in the ground around generating more college graduates in Tennessee. We had 33.8% of our residents with a college degree. And I don't have to remind you the implications of that, but just, I'll say this, I had the opportunity to be in a pitch meeting for a potential employer to relocate to Tennessee a few weeks ago. It became very evident to me there, we are not competing with 49 states, we're competing with about four. And we're really competing with about four zip codes. And the edge in those conversations is this, without question. The other thing that we've seen is that these data points are almost always directly correlated with quality of life factors, be they public health, incarceration, or opioids. The states that have a lower number of college graduates are not faring as well across a range of metrics. So we set out to change this. And when the governor, and I believe Governor Ramsey is just off picture there, I apologize. He is sitting behind the governor in that picture. We decided to put together as comprehensive a higher education reform initiative as I believe any state has ever pursued. A lot of our operating status, and Ms. Ayers can second this because she's on the front lines of Tennessee Promise in her counties, we're kind of doing everything all at once. We are trying to address Tennessee Promise by bringing more students who would have never considered going to college, entity, community, and technical colleges, and certainly with the hope that they become ETSU students upon transfer. We are trying to generate more adult students who perhaps left without a degree or never even attended college through the Tennessee Reconnect Program. We had hoped to have 8,000 Tennessee Reconnect students. We had 32,000, and that is in the midst of a booming economy. And then finally, the Focus Act was a key pillar of this effort to say, let's take these locally governed institutions and in many regards, let them turn them loose and let them innovate. And so the result now that I think we're most excited about is right here. More Tennesseans are going to college than ever before. I'll let you guess with that first year, what happened that year, but that was 5,000 students who weren't going to college, going to college that year. And that was the first year of the Tennessee Promise. We've continued to increase steadily and are now at a 64% level. It is the most Tennesseans that have ever gone to college. That's happening right now.
It's a 64% of-
All graduating high school students, Mr. Chairman. Another point, and I really want to thank Dr. Nolan for making this point. We are in a time of transition in the state regardless of what side you're on. There are going to be new legislators, there's going to be a new governor. We have been able to achieve an unprecedented level of higher education investment, really dating since about 2012. It's been systematic, every year, we're going to invest in higher education. And I'll interpret this very small font slide, we are now 13th in the nation for higher education investment. And we were not 13th in the nation a few years ago. This is a radical shift for our state, and our General Assembly and our governor have really stood in the door. And Governor Ramsey can tell you, there are no bad ideas in the budget process, there's almost always a lot of great ideas, but somewhere along the way, we were able to generate a narrative that in Tennessee, we fund higher education. There's no doubt, we're in a great economy right now, so we've been able to make these investments. We will ask the LGI boards to join the THEC board in advocating to continue this trend during the transition. We have 32 new legislators that we need to train, and we will, we'll be doing higher education kind of 101 for that new class of freshmen, and certainly we'll work with the new administration to make this point. But if THEC comes advocating for new higher ed funding, they say, well, that's what THEC does. But if board members do that, I believe that is very powerful, and at the right time, we'll certainly work through Dr. Nolan to develop that coalition approach. This is where I really want to brag on ETSU, because the data I've just shown you, if you're a Tennessean, or if you just care about ETSU, you should feel really good about where our state's at right now. But moreover, in preparation for today's meeting, we pulled data to just get a sense of where ETSU stood from an external perspective, and you should feel really good about where ETSU is as well. A couple of points. So we've broken down our six regional universities, fall-to-fall retention. Two things here that stick out to me. One, a 5% raw number increase in fall-to-fall retention at a university, that is an incredibly hard needle to move. And for ETSU to have done that in that short span is very impressive. The other thing is ETSU has moved to the front of the pack now. And you'll see, let's talk about, there's no doubt, Tennessee Tech takes a different kind of student, their ACT this year is gonna be a 25. That is an engineering institution. To be running right there and moving up from a comprehensive regional approach the way ETSU approach, and to be able to move near our technological university is very impressive. The other thing I'd say, it's harder to capture probably in data, one of our observations the last 18 months is that perhaps more than the other universities, ETSU is a regional rudder in a bunch of things, in culture, certainly in scholarship, obviously in healthcare. More so than I think the other LGIs, as ETSU goes, we see it across a range of factors in upper- in Upper East Tennessee. And so when you're retaining 5% more students than you were just a few years ago, that is a seismic regional impact. As you all know, in Tennessee, we have a unique funding structure in higher education, one that I think is superior to funding based on enrollment. If you fund institutions based on enrollment, they get really good at enrolling students. We fund in Tennessee based on outcomes. Where are students at the end of 12, 24, 36, and so on credit hours? This is ETSU's outcomes-based funding performance curve, and you don't have to be a statistician to be able to interpret. ETSU took a look at the outcomes-based funding formula and said, let's get to work. I once had a board member from another LGI say, so let me get this straight, these institutions who are doing great in the funding formula, you know, they're just making sure students succeed and gaming the system, to which I said, yes, they're, yes, sir, they are gaming the system. Students are succeeding at ETSU, and this formula makes that clear. And the net takeaway now is an 18% increase in state funds. The Dr. Nolan and the leadership team and the faculty certainly here have been able to say, when students do better, our institution reaps rewards. We also took apart the formula, and you may have never seen this before, because we don't do it all the time. We actually dissected a formula to see the areas where ETSU was garnering the most progress, and it's perfectly congruent with what you just heard from Dr. Nolan. Your production of associate and bachelor, I'm sorry, bachelor degrees, the purple line arcing over the top has been the engine for ETSU's increase in funding. So when you have a large graduating class, there's no doubt, we think about one side of the ledger, we maybe have a loss of enrollment, because it was a really large class, but in Tennessee, there is another side of the ledger, which is, we're going to give you credit for every one of those graduates. And so it's really clear to us when we see that, your bachelor's efficiency has gone up. And then that orange curve just below just really depicts ETSU's research and intense doctoral master's degree role, because that increase as well has been very steep. When you look at that bundle of metrics running along the bottom, most of the universities look like that in all of their outcomes. There's a few exceptions. UTC, Austin P., they're doing very well also, but ETSU, to have two metrics depart from the pack like that, what we see when we see that is an intentional leadership decision, where from the president and his team have sat down and said, we're going to be really good at this. We're going to graduate the largest class we've ever had, and that's the result. This issue, as some of you know, is close to my heart. After joining the military, I ended up a college freshman at the age of 24, and was a little bit bewildered briefly. Veterans coming to campus, I think we all have altruistic reasons. We want to be the best campus we can be for veterans. The reality is, though, they add an incredible amount of richness to the campuses, and you all got to see that yesterday, when we were able to meet with your fantastic ROTC cadre. This is just a fun statistic we teased out. ETSU's doubled the number of veterans they're producing essentially in about five years, and I think that that speaks not just to ETSU's ability to graduate veterans, which, again, that's almost an exponential increase. The things you do for student veterans generally benefit all adult students, because student veterans are by definition adults. So really, there's a story embedded within this that's positive for adult learners generally, but there's no doubt, when you see this data, you think, wow, and it's another intentional leadership effort that has now paid off for our veterans. I wouldn't want to, if I get a forum like this, I would love to always come with a challenge as well. And so I bring two challenges to the Board of Trustees, and we are doing this with all the LGIs. I don't have to tell you about challenge number one. Many of you, Ms. Ayers, is living this every single day, and that is trying to make sure that rural access is increased. When we look at a map like this, I think I see perhaps an opportunity deficit in many of our rural counties. Certainly Chairman Nicewonger knows about this in the first congressional district. These numbers, just like I mentioned earlier, are proxies for what is it like to live in that county? What is the amount of hope in that county? And equalizing college graduate numbers in our rural areas, in my mind, is our next big mission over the next few years. It can be done. Both the Nicewonger Foundation and the Ayers Foundation have numbers that clearly show you can defy geography and familial circumstance, and you can really bring a student out of their environment and bring them right up here, and they become one of your graduates. But we've got to do something about this, because I'll tell you, one of the things we keep hearing, there's no doubt, our economy is roaring. If you go to Hancock County, you do not feel like the economy is roaring. I was in Bledsoe County last week. These counties are distressed right now, and there's no doubt, I think, that this is closely related to the opioid crisis we're facing. And then the second challenge, and I've provided aggregate data here just to show you that unfortunately, on day one, if you're a low-income student in Tennessee, you are not going to have the same chance of success at virtually any of our institutions. There are a lot of really tactical ways this can be addressed, though, and many of those are underway at ETSU right now, to be clear, but closing this gap between low-income students and middle-income students, I also think is our great task over the next few years. When you hear about some of the innovations that are being deployed, you think, that's the innovation? Call roll, and then text students if they don't come to class. But for a low-income student, that's priceless, because they may be a first-generation student with nobody in their family saying, did you go to class today? There are a range of tactical things that really can move the needle quickly on this, and we'll be seeking Dr. Nolan and his team's insight on how to develop a state strategy. But there's no doubt, reaching drive to 55, just to THEC, that only matters if we do so while maintaining equity between our low-income students and certainly our rural students as well. That concludes my report, Dr. Nolan and Chairman Nicewonger, and happy to take any questions you might have.
Board? Mike, thank you for being here. I wish you were here more often.
Pals, having a pals.
I could ship that to you.
You get tea with a gallon.
We have a process matter, and as I speak about it, you'll be familiar with it. Our college, our Gattan College of Pharmacy, has been exploring the possibility of state-supported scholarships for Tennessee residents who attend Gattan. These scholarships would address the disparity that now exists for students due to the Tennessee, University of Tennessee's tuition structure that offer out-of-state residents within a specific geography in-state tuition. Give us some advice on how we run that to ground zero and we break through on that.
Yes, sir.
Because it is unfair, what occurs today.
Well, and certainly when Dr. Nolan first raised this issue at THEC, you know, you learn when you hear from presidents, and we all learned that day, that you could be a North Carolina resident going to UT and actually pay less than an in-state resident going to the Gattan School of Pharmacy, which I think we immediately at THEC found alarming. There's a history lesson behind it, and Mr. Powell certainly could participate in as well. When THEC initially considered creation of the pharmacy, one of our first questions when Dr. Nolan came to us is, we just wanted to be consultants to see, what were the parameters of THEC's approval? The parameters were to generally not rely on state funding. However, there is a sentence wisely inserted, because situations change. That said, the commission reserves the right at future time to make a different assessment. When Dr. Nolan and I began talking last year, I think one of the things we settled on was the student aid approach is one that probably was much more palatable. It is one that at THEC, we had no problem supporting. My impression of the road ahead really has to do with being able to tell that story in the General Assembly, and certainly with the administration too, because as you all know with the budget process, there's two phases, there's really two windows, and making sure when the transition begins on November 7th, sharing that history with the new administration. The direct support to the school was the piece that THEC was concerned about, and Dr. Nolan quickly responded with the financial aid approach that we thought, okay, that could work, because it really was in accordance with the commission's earlier 2005 recommendation. Essentially, at this point, though, and I would defer to Dr. Nolan, I think it's a matter of messaging and making the right connections, so that that story that we heard that day where we thought, wow, I didn't know that there was that kind of disparity, making sure people are aware of it from the appropriations level.
Okay.
The one-sentence answer, Mr. Chairman, the proposal that Dr. Nolan brought forth last year, we found satisfying, and in accordance with the previous THEC approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Or other issues to come before today? Anything else to be discussed? I have an issue as your chair to inform you, and then we have one other order of business that will require a motion.
Dr. Nolan may want to wrap up his report first before we move forward.
Gosh, I thought he was done.
I just heard the Chair, Nicewonger, and he's about to report.
Thank you, sir.
If you got some meat there, go ahead and speak.
Just want to make sure he didn't have anything else to add.
Always as important as- As your chairman, I have the responsibility for coordinating the evaluation of our president. Members of the executive committee have been engaged individually reviewing materials related to Dr. Nolan's performance. Been pretty good. I wanted everyone in the room to know that Dr. Nolan's evaluation and his employment agreement will be finalized this way. Thought you might want to know. Secondly, many of you will recall this past spring, the board authorized Dr. Nolan to proceed with the negotiations to acquire the Millennium Center property from Johnson City. Dr. Nolan has kept members of the board executive committee apprised of the developments in the process since that time. As those negotiations have been brought to a close, I would ask for the board to authorize Dr. Nolan to execute the purchase of the Millennium Center according to the terms of the outlined agreement found in your supplemental materials for this meeting. Are there questions from the board for Dr. Nolan about this process? Okay. Do I have a motion, please, authorizing him to?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close legs. All right. Lastly, the university staff has recently completed a structured request for proposal process to select banking services. The executive committee members were informed about the RFP process when that began. I would ask the board to authorize Dr. Nolan to execute the banking services agreement as provided for in our bylaws. Are there any questions about this matter for Dr. Nolan? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay. Thank you.
Number two.
There you go. With that, the board has nothing else. We'll consider this long but very productive meeting adjourned. Back she goes.
You didn't have a motion anyway. You have to have a motion to adjourn.
I'm ready.
I need to clarify that I should have stayed from that vote.
Yeah, I was watching her. She abstained.
She did.
Her mouth didn't move.
I was just sorry.
Fast forward.
Thank you.
Now I move with adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I sec.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for being here.